Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Um, we had a couple of technical difficulties, but now we are on the right track. So I'd like to call this April twenty-sixth meeting to order at seven fourteen. And our student reps are going to start us on the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very least of your access for all.
Thank you, ladies. Um, and we do not have acknowledgements, but we can go to the approval of agenda. At this time, I would like to introduce you to approved the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three minutes and March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Someone seconded.
Okay, um, are there any discussion for the numbers online? No? Okay, well, then we will go ahead and do a roll call since we're split. Um, Jacob?
Aye.
Jacob? Griffin?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
Ismael? Yeah, at this time, I would like to welcome the participation. If you can please press your hand. Press for. We'll be giving two minutes on the table. It's great. It's in the room, so it's just zooming. Jacob, you can speak at this point. You can raise your hand. Yep, seeing none, and we'll close up the participation. Okay, and we'll go to the four respondents.
Ashley, we can't hear you. It sounds like you're whispering or Jacob is whispering. I'm not sure something can be fixed with the owl, the microphone.
He's pretty loud, so.
Best thing, best thing.
Griffin, can you hear? We'll talk right now.
I, yes, I can hear Walt right now, and I can hear you. Um, but before you and Jacob just sounded like you were whispering, so maybe it was just that moment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Just continuing on.
An email from a town counselor arguing that behavioral issues are the result of budgetary decisions. An email from the new town middle school principal will be starting soon, thanking the Board of Ed for offering her the position. An email asking for the minutes of the March twenty-second Board of Ed meetings to be posted so that residents can have contacts for budget discussions. An email expressing gratitude for the Saturday school program. An email asking for permission to use the town public schools logo. An email expressing devastation over the recent arrest of a teacher for sexual misconduct. The author asked the superintendent to distribute notification of the situation to students, former students. An email to the town council with the Board of Education copy, expressing dismay over the town council budget vote. An email from a state representative and town counselor asking for an investigation of the events leading up to the arrest of former town public school teacher for sexual misconduct. An email from a town counselor asking for a formal inquiry regarding the sexual misconduct of the now former town public schools teacher. An email from the town manager and former chief of Harper Police, providing his thoughts on how to proceed in light of a sexual misconduct of a now former town public schools teacher. And an email expressing disappointment that the child development class was a root of the budget. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I would like to open it up for points of information for any board members at this time. If you can raise your hand, um, if you guys are here, just let me, uh, Griffin.
Thank you, Ashley. Um, I was just wondering if we had a date for the TMS, the, um, Culture and Climate Rounds that we were going to be doing.
We had.
Yeah, that's May nineteenth. Um, I'm about, I'm going to put signups on the board's dashboard soon, so you can let me know who is interested in attending.
Okay, great.
But yeah, that's May nineteenth for everybody to mark their calendar.
Thank you. And I, I, I just wanted to just let the whole board know that after, um, I won the auditor's report, unfortunately, I'm going to have to log off, but I just wanted to let you guys know that's, that I had something come up and I had to leave early. Thank you.
Thank you. And at that point, hopefully, um, Dana does join because otherwise we will not have forum, so, um.
We have to end the meeting.
Yeah, well, we have to just end it. Um, anyone else at this time?
Uh, I'll just say something briefly, you know, regarding recent events. Um, you know, I, I echo the, the sentiment of those expressed who wrote into the board, um, you know, regarding this recent sexual misconduct incident. It is devastating, um, to see this happen within our district. I, I hope that we can get some, some more information out to residents regarding how things were handled. I think that there have been, you know, a few misconceptions that we need to clear up. I think that'll, that'll bring some peace to the community, and I really hope that, um, the next few months can be a time of appealing, and, and justice for all those, um, involved in that. Uh, students will be able to avail themselves of the resources the district has made available.
Yeah, no, I'd like to, um, also go on to the same thing and actually, you know, a lot of things I was going to say. But, um, what I would like to make sure to reiterate is, you know, I am also deep saddened by the recent events, including the former teacher and student that we as a community are processing and navigating this together. And I do want to reiterate the sources that are available to the public, which are the THS counseling staff, which includes a school psychologist, the THS main office, to help to be directed to a particular staff member, including that admin, or to, uh, superintendent's office, Dr. Willett, and he will certainly get back to you in no time. Yep. Uh, this time, anyone else? Okay, we will move that, and we got a student representative report.
Okay, um, the first thing is, uh, spring sports are fully underway. Um, I'm, I'm playing girls tennis, and it's actually coming to an end soon, surprising, May seventeenth is our last match if we don't qualify for state. So it's coming actually and ending really fast. Um, I know our school photographer for the Tallinn Ness, uh, called them attack it. He's been going around and been taking photos for, um, all the sports, and they're actually excellent. So if you want to check that out, that'd be really cool.
Deca Nationals happened this week. A few students from Tallinn High School went to Orlando to compete in Deca Nationals. And Jude Regan and Jackie Sterling won second place internationally in marketing. And Sam Nussbaum placed in the top ten for finance. A great job to them, they're coming home right now.
Um, prom tickets are being sold after school. Is it all this week or was it the last?
This was the last day.
This was the last day. Um, they were taking like groups of ten first and then filling in the tables. So that's real exciting. Our prom is next Friday, and I'm excited to see it.
And just to add on to that, just a little plug in, the Hicksterns will be opening their gardens again for pitchers. So just put that out there, I haven't done any Facebook thing yet, but since we're talking about, you know.
There's a sign on the green, I think.
Yeah.
Did they put them on there? I can't, I can't keep up.
I can see.
Oh, perfect, okay, because it was a discussion and I didn't, I missed the last meeting, so. I didn't know if they wanted to put the A-frame out there, but I still want to, uh, get that on Facebook world because not everybody drives by the green.
Um, Student Council is working with two students to put on towels together. Where student, students can donate towels and hand cloths and wash cloths, and wash, washcloths and all that kind of stuff. Um, in collaboration with Stonewall Kitchen, Stonewall Kitchen, Stonewall Kitchen, um, where we will be donating those towels to people who need them.
Um, I'm a sophomore, so I don't take any AP classes currently, but AP testing starts next week for, for all juniors and seniors. So that's pretty exciting, um, make sure to study.
Um, and finally, SAT retesting happened, uh, on Monday, Tuesday, and today because of a mistiming in one of the classrooms, so the students did have to retake the SATs. So if there's any questions, please present them now.
It's hard to believe prom is already just going to send.
It's super early.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
I know, so that's, that was the thing, I can't use my pictures from last year because they're moving, so I'm like, I have to go back there because it's really just starting. So that's why I'm like, well, I gotta like take pictures so people aren't like, oh, those look so pretty, and I was like, well, it doesn't look like that right now.
The only thing I have to say is, um, uh, of course, um, beating at Nationals for Deca is a very difficult thing, um, very difficult. So to those members who, um, won or placed in their categories, congratulations. Those who qualified for Nationals, congratulations. It's a very difficult task, so, um, bravo. And shout out to Mrs. Bridge for being awesome.
And the Boys and Girls Lacrosse fundraiser is happening tonight at Mills.
Yes.
Did we talk about the music, Virginia, uh?
Oh, my God. Okay, so the chorus and band went to, that slipped my mind completely. Um, they went to Virginia Beach this week or last week.
Yeah.
And they competed, they did very well. The chorus got third place, chamber choir got second place. Band got first place, jazz band got second place, and our soloist, Addie Wright, got first place.
Overall.
Overall.
That's all. It's like really, puts a little talent on the map.
That's the week.
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you. I have to go because I have something to do for Miss Bridge tomorrow. So, gonna exit. Thank you very much, I'll see you all soon.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, so at this time, let's go ahead and jump right into the, um, superintendent's report for the first thing for the audits.
So I, I, I welcome tonight, uh, Ms. Vanessa Rosito. She is from Clifton, Larson, and Allen. She's, uh, she's gotten agreed to be here tonight to give us an overview of the audit process, um, talk about management letter and answer, uh, any questions that you might have. Um, Ms. Rosito, are you available?
I'm here.
All right, great. So you have the floor.
Okay, great, thanks so much. Um, so I just want to give an overview of the audit process, um, just in case you're not familiar with it, which a lot of people aren't. So, um, each municipality in the state of Connecticut is required to submit their audit to the State of Connecticut Department um, of Office and Policy and Management, um, on December thirty-first. So the Board of Education is a department in the town, so the Board of Education is included in the town audit. Um, in addition to the Board of Education's budget, which is, uh, you know, a, a major part of the general fund of the town. The general fund of the town is the operating fund of the town. It has all of the other departments, Public Safety, Public Works, et cetera. The Board of Education makes up a majority of that budget. In addition to that, the Board of Education is responsible for some of the smaller funds of the town. Um, the School Lunch Fund, the Caf- Cafeteria, the State and Federal Education Grants Fund, Before and After School Fund, and then the Student Activity Fund. So we include all of these funds when we do the audit of the financial statements of the town. In addition to that, because the town receives grant monies from the federal and the, and the state government, we're required to do something called a federal single audit and a state single audit. Um, so the grants are given to both the town and the Board of Education, and based upon certain criteria set forth by the federal government and the state government, we select programs to test. So this year, for the federal single audit, the program that was selected was the Child Nutrition Cluster, which is accounted for in the Cafeteria Fund. So that, you know, so we had to test transactions and, and make sure that, um, that grant was administered and spent correctly. And then for the state single audit, there were three major programs. LoSIP and TownAid Road, which is administered by the town. And then the third program was Family Resource Centers, which is a Board of Education program. Um, in addition to that, uh, maybe I'll talk about, so the, the Board of Education is also responsible to submit uh, an EFF three report to the State Department of Education. So we are required to perform agreed-upon procedures with respect to that report. And then lastly, um, or I guess I should say, within the federal, the state single audit, you know, the other thing that we look at and also connected with the financial statements is we look at the controls of the town. And if there's any, um, if there's any control deficiencies in the town or any department of the town, we are required to report those control deficiencies in the federal and the state single audit. Um, so those control deficiencies are in two categories, either a material weakness or a significant deficiency. So we did not have, we did not find any control weaknesses, so we did not report any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Um, there is also something called a management letter, which is where we report suggestions for improvement, best practices. Uh, maybe there is a control deficiency, but it's really not material. It's not going to have a material effect on the financial statements. Um, so we did have, uh, we did have a management letter comment this year for the June thirtieth, twenty-two audit. Um, and it did have something to do with the Board of Education. And so Walt, have, has, have the Board of Education members seen this, um, management letter? Would you like me to kind of go over it in a detailed way?
Yeah, the, they've seen it, it was on, uh, some material provided to them.
Okay, wonderful. So, so you've seen the letter. Um, so we had, you know, one comment, um, with respect to the Board of Education Business Office. Um, and I, we, my team met with Walt and Hiram, I, maybe a month ago now, and we're confident that these will not be repeated for the June thirtieth, twenty-three audit. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Go ahead, you have it. Um, yeah, so thank you for being here tonight, um, Ms. Rosito. Um, could you explain in your own words sort of what that, um, sort of what the one comment was? Um, you know, sort of about the BOE Business Office, the last point you just mentioned. Could you explain that sort of from your perspective?
Sure, so there were three bullets in the, the comment, and it really has to do with the bookkeeping of the business office of the town. So there was three different issues. So the first issue was that the activity was not being recorded in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And so really what that means is at June thirtieth, literally, the books were closed. And you really can't do that because that's sort of a cash basis of accounting. Um, there's a lot of things that happen after June thirtieth. There's accounts payable that need to be recorded. There could be receivables that need to be recorded. So there's accrual entries that need to be recorded to the various funds to ensure that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So there was a hard cutoff at June thirtieth without really looking at any activity after June thirtieth to see if any accrual should, should have been booked. And, um, accrual should have been booked and were not. So that was one of the points. The second point was that there were purchases being made before a purchase order was issued. But I feel like this was, um, I don't remember the specifics of this, Walt, maybe you do, but I feel like this was maybe an emergency purchase type of situation.
Yeah, there, there was that, um, it was, it was, it didn't align well with a grant, the FRC requisitions converted, and there was a grant thing. It didn't line up with the timing of the grant, I think, you know, that type of thing.
Right, so that, that was that issue. And then there was, um, a payment made. So there was, you know, we saw a cash dispersment in the records of the Board of Education. We asked for support for this dispersment. Um, you know, like a, an invoice or, you know, some sort of support to, to tell us or document what this, um, what this expenditure was for. And at the time, when we asked for it, um, the support could not be found. Um, so subsequent to that, we have found support in, in the, the expenditure was fine, but care should be taken to ensure that there is documentation and support for all of the expenditures of the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, um, let's go to Griffin.
Thank you, um, thank you for being here, uh, to go through this. Um, I have a bunch of questions. So, um, just to kind of talk about what you were just mentioning about that there was activity that was not, uh, recorded in accordance with GAAP.
Yeah.
Was this the first time that that had happened or had that, has that been going on for several years since you've been auditing?
I mean, I, I feel like this was the first year that there was a hard cutoff, that, you know, things were just closed with no care as to, you know, is there anything that happened after year end that perhaps should have been included in the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two amounts? I think we've had, I think we've had other comments in previous years, um, but not specifically that same comment.
Um, was there an explanation given as to why this particular year they were kind of using such a hard cutoff on June thirtieth?
Um, I, I don't, I don't think there was a good explanation for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know what the, the previous business director's comments were about this. Um, and I think Ms. Rosito agrees that, that, uh, we don't feel like the, the new business director will fall into this situation, but, or, or have the same mindset on this. I think we, we won't see that happening again with our new business director. But our prior business director, uh, feels like he did it for a specific reason. Obviously, that reason was, wasn't sufficient.
Um, okay, so, so obviously, you're aware about, um, our staffing for this department. How does our staffing compare to towns of similar size? So basically, we have, we have one person who's a CFO. Is that typical for, um, districts our size?
I mean, that's a hard question for me to answer. Um, you know, I think every, every finance office, including our audit firm, is very resource short. Um, so I, I don't know, you know. Obviously, it's not an ideal situation. I think you just have to make sure that the proper controls are in place, that there's not one person doing, you know, um, how shall I say, um, creating and approving a transaction. You have to make sure that you have controls in place. Um, you know, a better resource maybe is the CASBO organization. They probably have more information on communities your size and the staffing in the, in the finance office.
Thank you. So then how do you feel, I guess, as you, as the auditor? Um, do you feel that we have enough segregation of duties? You just mentioned, you know, we should have kind of a checks and balances with more than one person. But how comfortable are you that we can do that with this department?
Yeah, I mean, we had, um, we had very good experiences with Haram and we're confident in his abilities. And I, I don't think that there are any control gaps or else we would have mentioned them in the management letter. Um, so I, I think you do have to put controls in place.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple more, sorry. Um, I'm the finance chairperson, just to let you know. Probably have the most questions, and I'm actually a CPA, former author. Um, okay, so, um, what was the nature of your testing of the TPS expenditures? Did you use a certain scope? Was it a certain, you know, number of expenditures? You know, how did you, how do, how do you test, you know, all, all of our expenses?
Yeah, I mean, it's based upon risk, right? I mean, we do a risk assessment, we have materiality, and then we use a scope. Um, so, and, you know, there's, there could be a level of, um, of unpredictability in the testing too. Um, and, and we do, we do do expenditure testing with respect to the, um, the grant audit, right? And also the EFS, the agreed-upon procedures, we also do expenditure testing there.
So do you test then? Because I know one of your comments was about, you know, purchase order, uh, orders.
Yeah.
So you do a certain number of, um, testing like that regarding?
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we do expenditure testing, we do look for the, you know, the purchase order that's attached to it and, and so forth. That's part of the attribute of the test.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so since you didn't put it in the management letter, but I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts. So do you then feel that our internal controls around, you know, credit card usage, Amazon accounts, all of those individual, you know, student activity counts at the schools? Do you feel that those are sufficient? You know, because we have looked at them, but from your perspective, do you think that the internal controls are, are good?
So we haven't specifically looked at the controls over that. And, um, I mean, if, if that's not part of the audit scope, um, because it's, it's probably not material to the entire entity. But if you wanted us to do something like that, we, you know, we could do a separate agreed-upon procedures engagement or what have you.
Okay. Um, okay, I think that's all I have for now, so I will yield the floor to other board members. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Lauren?
Thank you. Um, thank you for coming to our meeting. Um, I guess really my only questions are in, in regards to the cash dispersment and the information you got, as well as the POs that were issued after the purchases were made. Are these all part of a report that we as board members can look at and see?
Um, no, no, we don't include, um, uh, copies of the transaction or, or report or anything, no. It's just a written report that, that has been shared with you.
Okay, uh, and do you think there's anything that we can do as board members to, I don't want to say to help, but to just provide the necessary oversight that we're supposed to. You know, so when we watch the town council meeting and we see the management letter, it doesn't come across. You know, so when we watch the town council meeting and we see the management letter, it doesn't come across as so surprising.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, I think if you as a board, you should be discussing the controls of and I, you know, I don't know if you have a finance committee of the Board of Education, but it would not be a bad idea to get some members together and have a finance committee and discuss the risks at, in the business office, you know, the susceptibility of risks. And, you know, just talk about that and determine if you think there are any. I think, you know, if, if you want, if the town council, I think it would be great if you attended the town council meeting when we do present the audit, because I think the board event is a, you know, a big part of the town. So that would be, that would be good too.
Thank you so much. That's all I had.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, just out of curiosity factor. When you're typically writing these reports, how many typical recommendations do you typically on average provide?
That's a very hard question to answer. Yeah. I don't know that there's really typical. We definitely do not shy away from making recommendations because we think that, you know, part of our, our job is to help organizations make their controls better. So if we don't have any findings, if you will, to report, which we have to, we, we really do try to make suggestions to improve our clients' controls. I, I think it's, I guess I can say that it's very rare that we don't have a management letter.
Yeah, no, that's what I figured. I figured that going through this, that there are too many places that would get an A++. So thank you very much for that. Any, anyone else have any follow up questions or anything to add? Walt, do you have anything to add?
No, I just, I appreciate it, Ms. Rosito, for giving us the time. I know that it's not always typical, and I do appreciate that you were able to do that for us. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. My pleasure.
So thank you very much.
Griffin, thanks so much. Have a good day. Thank you. Thank you.
Griffin, you are leaving at this point?
Yes, I just wanted to make kind of just one comment to the board. You know, as the finance chairperson, I just wanted the board to know that, yes, we have talked about and looked at and gone through some of the internal controls. I would have loved to have, you know, had the auditor kind of say that, you know, they looked at them too and we're all on board. But I think that that's something that we may want to consider, and I will put it on a future FFC agenda that maybe we do need to add to the agreed upon procedures in the next year's audit, that they look at that and that we also talk about the, as she was saying, the risks to the business office, which with having such a small business office with the segregation of duties and just kind of checks and balances. So I just kind of wanted to assure the board that, you know, we have talked about this and it is something that I will be bringing forward probably for the next go around for the audit for June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. But thank you. And yes, I'm sorry, I'm going to be logging off now, so hope everybody has a good night. Thank you.
And Dana is on, so therefore we do have quorum, so we will continue. She just, I just saw that seven forty-seven. And Griffin is obviously leaving at seven forty-eight. Okay, let's jump to item two.
All right, so item two is the monthly financial reports. Sorry, I gotta get through the minutes here, scrolling, scrolling. All right, so basically a monthly financial report, most important piece of this generally is the spreadsheet we have for everybody. Please note that the budget balance thirty-eight oh forty-three eighty-two is about one zero nine percent. I'll give you some of the highlights of the budget. This is succinctly as I can. Salaries, one-ten are currently under budget. This will go down as the district continues to go through the remainder of the year. As you know, you know, we had, we had for a large part of the year a situation where we were not fully staffed, so that does impact that line. We continue to fill the positions. And right now, we're, we're at the point where as we roll into next year, almost every teaching position is filled. That was not the case for the previous, you know, for the year as a whole. Similarly, thirteen pair of positions, you know, went for a good part of the year vacant. But as we get into the spring and summer, we are starting to find more people interested in working again. And we are also using different people for those positions that so it's not really that they're one hundred percent without a person. You know, there's people that we brought in or that we have used current staff to cover as we continue to hire those. And we may be hiring, you know, AVISs, BISs and so on, where those positions used to exist. Substitute code one-twenty available balance is ten thousand under. The line is down by a hundred and four thousand from last month. We started to make sure we, you know, we're careful about subs. The only subs that are not actually encumbered are the ones who work on an on a call basis. Overtime, one-thirty expenses are currently under budget by sixty-five thousand. Stipends, one-fifty are currently under by fifty-eight thousand. Pay-to-play funds are not fully collected for the spring now. Pay-to-play once collected and start to change that balance. It usually does this every year. Health insurance severance, employee benefits, which is one-ninety-two-hundred-two-ten are collectively fourteen K over budget. We anticipate the admin and TDA severance, you know, were encumbered back in twenty-two, and that's going to get incurred, the additional severance. You know, you'll just see those come against that account soon. Newly hired employees and retired employees, bike and med social security code two-twenty, newly hired employees and those who retired since the beginning of the year can change the balances. We're currently under by fifty-eight. Retirement, course reimbursement, unemployment to forty-two fifty-two sixty are collectively under. Not all course reimbursements have been filed. A lot of people are finishing up their semesters. We have no claims yet for employment. As of February twenty-three, available balance is twenty-five. Benefits consulting and workers comp balances code two-seventy-three-ten are currently under by about seven. Fifty K was encumbered during the month of November. On the benefits consultant line, three-ten, we also paid in January twenty-two-three our portion of the OPEV valuation report. No significant real changes in March there. Where we start to see a lot of the overages that will balance out some of these under, underspends is things like professional education services, three-twenty, it's over by eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars. It's an increase from last month. Special ed needs are incurring on this line. This is potentially going to continue to increase as we get towards the end of the year. And so that's what we're watching very, very carefully. Legal, audit and tech line, three-fourty-three-fifty, they are also over budget for forty-one thousand. There's a lot of legal activity right now. Tech services needed in the district is the main course of this particular line being over, however. So that's just something we're keeping an eye on. Maintenance, repair, custodial cleaning, equipment, technical, two-four twenty, four-thirty, continue to be spent as the year progresses. Currently, they're under by seventy-five thousand, down five thousand by last month. Maintenance and custodial expenses typically will be incurred as we go on the year. And now we're in that stage of the year where we're starting to clean up everything, clean up the facilities, you know, in preparation for summer work. A lot of the things have to get done before we bring in maintenance. So there's a lot of, a lot more that will happen there in the next two months. Transportation code five-ten is over budget by forty-seven thousand. It's a change of a hundred and twenty-two thousand. So we closed some POs and made the payments, certain payments. So bus routes can continue to be adjusted based on needs and enrollment. So you'll see that line fluctuate a little, but it's going to be over budget generally. Especially at tuitions, another one, five-sixty, they're over budget by four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. The balance is going to continue to adjust as we get to the end of the year. These are basically the tuition, you know, programs and so on, districts. So you're going to see that kind of, that's something we've been watching very, very carefully. The services that we have to spend for special services at eight-ninety-eight over and the tuitions over by almost five hundred thousand. You know, that puts us in a spot where we have to be very careful about balances. And although we have some under budgets in many areas, we, we want to make sure we're ending the year, you know, in the right place budget-wise. And so we have to continue to watch those lines extremely carefully. Energy, as you know, was transferred at the beginning of the year to the UISF account. Textbooks, they're under by thirty-three at this point. You know, we froze things, so that's not going to change between now and the end likely. Instructional supplies, equipment miscellaneous generals, that's code six-hundred-six-ten-six-ninety-seven-thirty are collectively over by thirty-four thousand. And that pretty much summarizes where we're at right now. We are currently, you know, above the line of a negative. We do have an excess cost payment coming in, in May that will be probably another two-hundred, three-hundred thousand. But we are definitely going to come in close at the end of this year. Then we're watching that carefully. We have many lines frozen. You know, and we're doing everything we can to make sure we finish in a positive position.
Thank you, Dr. Willett, for that. Do any board members have any questions? If you do, I'm on, you can raise your hand if you're here. Looking at you two.
We talked a lot about this next, see the detail lines, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Willett. Let's go to Green Skies.
All right. So once again, we, we were very fortunate to have both Adam Teff, you know, who is from Titan Gen, as you know, and Matt Rennelli. Currently, we are continuing to work on the PPAs. I know, you know, Ms. Shake, Attorney Shake, had a number of wonderful questions. I know Mr. Rennelli was working on those. Just didn't really, I don't think have enough time to get all the way through it before the meeting, but they're here again to answer any questions that we have. The PPA, I believe we're working on a final version of that. Matt, would you like to make any, Attorney Rennelli, would you like to make any kind of comments about kind of where we are in the PPA? And then add Mr. Teff, if you want to follow that up?
Sure. All right. Thank you. Good evening, members of the, of the board, Matt Rennelli, Shipman and Goodwin. I'll, I'll update you, the sort of, I think it's useful to think about these projects in two buckets. One are the front of, the behind the meter projects, which will be handled through a document called a power purchase agreement, PPA, which we talked about. And the other bucket are the run-of-the-meter projects, which are sort of relatively new to most schools and the state in general, which are handled through a license agreement. So let me update you on where we are. We, we, at the last meeting, you had seen, I think, a copy of our markup of the PPA template that was offered by Green Skies. Green Skies, we met and spoke, I think, several times last week and made a lot of progress, exchanged a few turns of the document. Green Skies accepted most of our changes. We don't yet have a sort of penultimate draft, but I, I do think we received a draft back from Green Skies this afternoon, which is getting very close to, to being ready for, you know, sort of the final review. And my, my expectation is that the issues or items that are open are not necessarily the major issues. So in other words, long-winded way of saying, I think these, the PPA draft is in pretty good shape. I did receive the comments that Dr. Willett mentioned, and I have gone through all of them. And I think they're all addressable or, and/or have been addressed in the, you know, exchange of documents in the past week with a couple of small exceptions. There's, and I'm happy to go through each question. Dr. Willett, if that's what the board would like, I mean, there's, you know, there's a number of them, but I could probably go through them pretty quickly. Or I could just tell you that I think they're all either in process or identified. You know, to Green Skies, there's really only one of them that they've sort of rejected out of hand so far, which had to do with, if there had been a certain number of failures or breakdowns of the system, we had wanted a provision that required them to do a, you know, investigation and, and testing and provide us with a report, which on its face is reasonable. Green Skies, their objection to that was that, A, it's, it's, it's not a typical part of their contracts. And, and B, you know, they emphasize the aligned interest that they have in keeping the system functioning. And what they mean by that is, under the PPA, they only get paid based on the kilowatt hours produced. So if there is a problem with the system, they are adequately incentivized to hunt it down and fix it. That said, you know, it's also, you could say, well, if that's the case, then there should be no problem agreeing to this provision because it would likely never be triggered. So we can go back to them on that if, if the board would like me to emphasize it to them. But their initial reaction, again, was, was, they just didn't feel like it was necessary and didn't want to create another obligation. So I will take your direction on that. My, my experience with it is I do agree that they, they are incentivized to keep the system running. But I also think that, you know, it's not an unreasonable request. You know, stranger things have happened. So I kind of, you know, I don't think it's a deal breaker, but I think if we want it, we should go back and ask for it again. So you can think about that and instruct me at the end. But the, so on the PPA side where we left it is, I, I have reviewed the draft that they provided this afternoon. I've made some additional comments. I was going to wait until after this meeting to send it back to them. So either later tonight or tomorrow morning, I'll, I'll send the draft back. And my expectation is, once I, what I should get back from Green Skies is a clean version that we can present to you as, you know, ready for final review. So I, I can pause there, take any questions on the PPA if you would like. Or I could go on and let you know the other bucket, the run-of-the-meter projects, where they stand.
This is a general agreement about, or a general question about the PPAs. Last time we talked, we spoke a little bit about the terms of the contract for when our facilities team needs to conduct maintenance on the roof. And how there, there, there didn't seem to be enough days that we were allowed to do that in the contract before we started having to pay for losses with the system being disconnected. Was, were you able to make any progress with regard to those provisions to get us some days back on the contract for maintenance?
Yes. So we, what we requested on that provision was we requested to have five maintenance days a year and that we could essentially bank those days for up to three years. So in any three-year period, if we hadn't used them, we would have a, a total of fifteen days available to us. And those days would have to be, you know, we'd have to use obviously best efforts to keep, to avoid using those days during the high generation days for the solar system, which, you know, unfortunately for us as a school, those days are in the summers, and I know schools like to do a lot of maintenance. But that's sort of a normal compromise to try to do them over a break or something like that. Green Skies was not, although in the past they have agreed to that exact number, you know, over the years, these the financing, I guess, has just gotten more difficult or more stringent or, or the companies have become more cautious. But at any rate, they, they were not willing to go with five days a year, up to fifteen days in total. But they were amenable to an alternative which would give us But they were amenable to an alternative which would give us, I believe, I have to go back and look, but I believe it's ten days in any five-year period. So, for example, in the first five years, probably the most unlikely time, but possible if we ran into an instance where we needed roof repair. Remember, this is only roof repair that requires taking down some of these systems. It's not repairs that could be made without removing the system. But if we had to do the type of repair that would require disconnecting and removing the system or portions of it, we would have up to ten days that we could use in any, in that first five-year period. And then at the end of that five-year period, we'd have another ten days. So that would be our, I would call it an allowance. We'd have a ten-day allowance. And, you know, it's probably good, maybe Dr. Willett and I, or someone could consult with the facilities people to see what their take is on that, whether that's realistic. But I will say I've seen that number of days in other agreements. So that's what they're willing to agree to at this point. That's, that's where it stands. And that would be without the penalties that I described, you know, penalties slash costs that I described at the last meeting. If we exceeded those days, the allowance of days, then we would incur all the costs that I described, including paying for the power that wasn't generated. I lost power for Green Skies, paying for any lost environmental attributes, lost tax attributes. And in addition, the school would also be buying replacement power, probably at, you know, its contracted rate or standard offer rate if it's on the standard offer.
You know, just two things actually that kind of sprung to mind on this that, you know, I thought about after the fact, just when we spoke last time, I think it's just worth bringing back into the conversation as it relates to this piece. About half of the total project capacity of over, over the portfolio is either ground mounted or on a carport structure. So you know, I think that's just important because the, the potential exposure here really only relates to you know, about half of the, the, the total portfolio. You know, which hopefully gives people a little bit more comfort that, you know, you're not taking on extreme, extreme risks or anything like that. And just the other thing too, Matt, I would say that I don't think there'd be any loss of federal tax benefits for having to decommission the system for, you know, a couple of days here or there. So I think it would just pertain to you know, lost revenue on their side and or, you know, from, from the customer and also from the N res program.
Yeah. Well, under, under the, I, I don't, I agree that the projects are split. And I would point out the the allowance provision also does apply to the carports, which is good news. So you would even have, if, if, for example, you needed to do some sort of maintenance in the parking area that required, for whatever reason, disconnecting the carports, the allowance would also apply there. That's, I think, good news. But to just under the contract, you know, what, just so we're clear, what it says is we would be responsible for any lost tax attributes, how much there would be, et cetera. I, I can't tell you, but that's not something they're willing to take out of the contract. So I would just plan for that's a potential exposure.
So thank you for that. I guess just one question, and I apologize if I've asked it before, for more of a request, if we could just run that number by Peter Staba, facilities guy.
Yeah, the town we have.
Okay, is comfortable with that?
Yeah, and it's industry, it's, it's barely industry.
Okay. That's good to know. Because I mean, I couldn't tell you that's a good number or not. So I need to know whether, whether.
And he's involved in this, he's just.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. The, the other, I guess the other loose end, I can't recall, Dr. Willett, if we heard back from the school's broker on the, on the insurance provisions, we were going to run that by the broker just to make sure that the insurance requirements didn't seem out of place to the broker.
Yeah, I have reached out. We haven't yet heard back.
Okay. I mean, what I, what I see in the document is, again, pretty standard for what I've seen in other documents, but I do think it's a good practice to let your broker take a look at it. They're, they're closer to what your existing policies are and what coverage is you might want to ask for. So always good practice, but, but I didn't see anything that's not sort of, you know, within the range of what's acceptable industry-wide. The, the, the other bucket, if I can, if I can go on, is the license, the two front of the meter projects, which are, as we talked about last time, larger projects which fall into a relatively new category in Connecticut for systems that can be built on a location, but they don't serve that location and they aren't part of a virtual net metering program where they are allocated to provide credits to, you know, a location owned by the school, for example. So these are really more like what, what people call merchant power plants. I mean, they produce power. Really what the school gets out of this is it doesn't get any of the electrons or credit for the electrons. It simply gets a fee. In this case, it would be a license fee. So I shouldn't say the school, what, what is paid is a license fee. So there are a couple of moving parts here. Green Skies initially sent us a lease, even though our letter of intent called for a license. We revised that lease to remove a lot of the lease related provisions and convert it to what looked more like a license, but retaining the template from their document. After meeting with Green Skies about that this week, they kind of agreed, and I don't disagree, that it would be probably better not to try to create a license out of something that was a lease. So they later on provided us with a license on Monday afternoon, which I'm in the process of reviewing, and hopefully it's going to be a little simpler in terms of just converting some of the comments we already provided to them into this new document. And this, so this bucket is a little, in terms of where we stand, is a little bit behind the P P A. We're not quite, you know, there because we have this sort of, I think, false start with the document. So I, I really can't tell you, you know, how it will, how, how, how the exchange of documents will go, other than we've, you know, Green Skies is in the business of doing this and they've been very responsive on the P P A side, and they seem very amenable to working through the license. I would just say my concern here is more, again, you know, having, and talked to Green Sky, I've talked to Green Skies about this. My concern is the procedure or process here and sort of the, who is the party to the lease, to the license? And how will the funds be accrued or flow? And what I mean by that is, as we talked about, the, the Board of Ed property is owned by the town for the benefit of the Board of Ed. So typically, when there's a lease or a license on the property, the town has to either sign that document or somehow or another authorize, appropriately authorize the Board of Ed or the superintendent to sign it. So that's one hurdle that I think we, we, we're working to get a handle on. I, you know, I don't represent the town, as, as you know, so I can't tell you what their response to that would be and where they stand on it. The, the second one, though, I think goes more toward to the Board of Ed's expectations and the town's, what might be the town's expectations. And that is, where does the license fee go? Who does it accrue to? And as I said, a lot of times Boards of Ed's enter into these power purchase agreements with two goals. One is, you know, sort of a mission driven goal of, of clean energy and doing the right thing. The other one is sort of a budgetary goal of not just reducing, but also stabilizing their energy costs. And the P P A is a good instrument for that. When you apply those goals to the license and the front of the meter, what are called buy-all projects, the second prong, you know, how it favors your budget or not is, is what I'm, what I'm getting at and what I'm worried about. And that is it, it may be that the town would say, well, these license fees accrue to the town, not to the Board of Ed directly. And, and maybe the town passes them through during budget season, maybe it doesn't. But in the absence of an agreement, typically, these fees would go to the, you know, property owner. So I think that's something probably we, we really need to clarify. And I talked to Green Skies about that, and they kind of agreed these were new questions for them as well. So I think that's probably, unless you tell me otherwise, one of the priorities, because I'm not sure the Board of Ed's appetite to host a system if they're not getting the financial benefit or price stability of power that they would get, for example, under a P P A.
No, thank you for all your information, because I definitely did have another question, and it kind of ties into both of them. I know last time you said that it's not a package deal, that you can pick and choose the different projects that you, that if you feel comfortable with. How does that impact the ramps situation? Like how?
Yeah, well, yeah, well, let me, yeah, Mike, what I was saying was that in terms of looking at the overall savings and running the, the sort of sensitivity analysis that, you know, could be some of them are built, could be all of them are built, could it be none of them? But, and, and it is true, I think, the town is in a position, the Board of Ed is in a position where they can pick and choose, but to be.
Well, I didn't need to verify that too, because I'm, I'm not 100% sure off the top of my head.
Yeah, but, well, let me, Adam, just let me finish. To be, to be clear, Green Skies has has put up a deposit for these systems when they, for the ones that have been bid in. So I, you know, sort of Green Sky's expectation is that the town, that the Board of Ed would want to do the projects that get approved. That said, the L O I wasn't binding. So I mean, is, is, I think technically true that, you know, that's not where we are. But in terms of sort of just, you know, expectations of the parties, I think they do expect, you know, the, the projects for which they put up a deposit money that if they were approved and, and if the documents can be worked out, that, that we would all go forward. But, you know, now's the time to, to decide if there are projects that, that the Board of Ed is, you know, not as not as confident about, you know, I think we'd want to let Green Skies know that as soon as possible. Sorry, Adam, go ahead.
No, it's, yeah, I just would want to verify exactly if there's any implications to the pricing and the portfolio of certain projects drop out. I'm just not sure off the top of my head. If that is the case or not the case, so it's just something that I'd want to verify.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, it could be that, it could be that they again, that there was no agreement that requires them all to go forward, but it could be as Adams is saying that Green Skies priced them with that. Although my understanding from talking to Green Skies is that they were, you know, priced separately, but I didn't ask the question, would that find a point?
Yeah, I can get an answer on that pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other further questions? Anyone online?
There's one quick question. I just wanted a reminder about when we'll know. Again, I forget what the.
I think it was, they said May, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, yep, so the, the N res program, we're expecting a formal bid awards within the next week or so. The expectation is basically around May first, and then, yeah, ten days. Greens guys will have ten days to either claim the award or basically tell ever source, no, thanks, we'll take our money back. So the timeframe that we're working with, you know, that ten-day clock is going to start ticking likely within the next week or so.
Yeah, when, I, I, is the next Board of Ed meeting the second Wednesday of, is that what it is, the second Wednesday?
May tenth.
Yeah, I, it's ten, so the, 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 the clock Adam's referring to is business days, I think. So that's the good news. So if the awards come out next week, you know, we should be, we should have through the next meeting. And what I would suggest is that, that I get to Dr. Willett, these sort of penultimate drafts in time for that meeting, time for everyone to review it before that meeting of both the P P A and, and the license. Because we will more likely than not need to make a decision at that meeting. So maybe.
Sorry, I'm noticing, you know, ten business days is literally the twenty-fourth, it looks like, which would be the very next meeting, but our meetings happen at seven at night.
I'm sorry.
So I guess I just mean if, if, let's say, ever source comes back and issues the awards on May first, so let's call it like Monday, then, you know, ten business days basically puts us to the twelve.
Okay, all right, all right, I understand. I thought we needed two, two reads or something.
No, but we did it first.
We already did it. So if you consider the meetings we've had as really the first read, you can say that the May tenth is just. Yeah. But I mean, the thing is, we need the P P A as soon as possible.
Yeah, I, so we have the version, which I can provide or did provide, I think, this afternoon, this evening that we have from Green Skies. I think the next version, when you say we need the P P A, I think what you mean is the next version, which is going to be the, the sort of clean, you know, subject only to, to typos and other cleanup. So that shouldn't be a problem on the P P A side. I'm, I'm confident. And, and I also think, you know, we'll, we'll get that done on the license side. But in the meantime, I think it's these other questions we want to track down. So when you're ready to vote, you have answers to them. And, and also if we need the town approval of the town manager or the town council that we have adequate time to get that as well.
And that's the other thing.
So it goes to us and then I get to pick to.
Basically, I have to get the town. Right now, it looks as if, although Matt, Mr. Attorney Rennelli will be helping us clarify this. It looks like it's the town manager that can't do that, but we have to check.
Okay, so we need to find out if it goes from our board to the town, or town council board, or if it goes just to the town manager.
I would suggest that it flow, you know, prior to the meeting. So in other words, it wouldn't be the case where you guys meet on it at your next meeting, and then it goes over. Typically, in towns that I've worked with, or Boards of Ed that I've worked with, what we like to get is, you know, the, the town authorization in place, you know, and then we bring it to the board and they can approve and sign. So and just given the timing here of the, of the ten, ten business days. If the meeting is on Wednesday, it would only leave us Thursday and Friday. So you know, usually what we can do is if we, Dr. Willett, if we talk to the town manager and he is in fact authorized, we can give him a copy, at the same time we give the board a copy and ask him to approve it in concept. And then, you know, he'd be ready to sign it when the board approves it.
Yeah, as soon as we have it, I'm going to convey it to him and have a conversation with him. So he can check with your contact.
Yes, because don't forget, our town is closed on Fridays.
Right.
So that bumps, yeah.
Okay.
And it's closed, as you know, our town is closed on Fridays. The town office is closed on Friday. So we have much less, it's a narrow window.
Yeah. Well, the other, I guess the other piece, if, if we could get some direction on this is this question of where the revenue would go. If in fact, the, the revenue would not go directly to the Board of Ed, you know, does that alter the, the board's desire to go forward with these, or should we still go forward?
Yeah, I think that was an important question that you had brought up last meeting, and I think that was something we would have to speak about. And I think that was something we would have to speak about because I want to bring up the whole geothermal and the Yusuf account and everything else. Something to consider. Especially when we ask for a fund insurance, I mean, yeah, so I'll just stop there for right now. That is a very pivotal question that I think board members would love the answer to from our town how it would be set up. Because it is highly important how that would be budgeted into our factor.
So don't have a whole lot of time to really talk about that. Has anybody been engaged on the town side with that? And have we talked at all about?
Well, I think part of the thing is some of that conversation there. But we need the PPA to be able to reach out to them.
But if he gets the draft PPA to us
They can give
and we can possibly let Mr. Foley know that this is our draft.
As soon as we have
Because I'm assuming we have to figure out what requirements are. I mean, do we need a full board for the town council side? Like, we need to figure out logistics wise to be prepared to move quickly. Because if they need to have a meeting, you know, there's a lot of
Yeah. We've been meeting on this probably six, seven times now, but I mean, the council's never even seen this. Like, yeah.
The problem is that we we still, we have to get that PPA. They have to see it, yes, have it, because he's going to have to give it to Conti. Yeah. So I mean, it is, it is again, to the point of the timeline being tight. And we had brought up this timeline last meeting.
Yeah, there's a question though. Can Attorney Rennelli talk to Conti?
Yeah.
And they can have that conversation? Because maybe that would be a quicker dialogue to
Well, we'll definitely do that. I think it's just at this point, you know, the, once we have the draft, the attorney county, uh, Renelli was speaking of that is just, you know, grammatical, that it's and and nothing else. Because otherwise, you know, it's not enough form, it's fine. So we, I'm ready to do that as soon as we have it.
Why don't I, why don't I get that, why don't I get that to you, Dr. Willet tomorrow? I'll send it to you and to Green Skies at the same time. And we can, if it's okay with you, we could then send it to Attorney Conti, you know, with the under, with, you know, the explanation that this is in the hands of Green Skies. So it's subject to change, but the he'll have, you know, enough, I think, context that he can, and I've and I've worked with Attorney Conti in the past on, I mean, I know he's familiar with these types of projects. So I think that would give him hopefully adequate context that we could at least get the broad direction down, subject to the to the refinement of the final document.
Right, so I, yes, definitely, that that sounds like a good idea. And of course, I'm assuming that the town manager fully would would engage Conti. I'm just making that assumption, but I believe, you know, strongly that he would.
But I mean, we have to get to the first hurdle of whether or not our board decides that this is the right
Right, so we'll do it as a parallel or, you know, we'll give it to them while they're looking at it. He ultimately is bored with the side once we have
Yeah.
That.
So procedure, when when would be best guess? How quickly would the board receive that? I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be a pretty lengthy.
Well, as soon as it's available in its final forum, you know, final draft forum, I'll post it to the dashboard at the same time that we're giving it to, you know, town manager full fully. And and that that by May 1st, if that is the date that the NRES makes their decision, then we will have that timeline going right up, as they said, to the 12th. But that Friday is not useful to us. So it's tight, it's really tight. We'll we'll be doing a lot of work in that first, basically, period of time, first week.
Yep. Yes, my, yeah, my question was just in terms of deciding where the money goes to. You know, so mainly do the contract and everything, there goes town board. Because that's not a conversation between, that's a conversation between the board and and the town, not not Green Skies and and us. So we would have a little bit more time to figure that out, is that correct?
Yeah, you know.
Because I could have a hard time agreeing to something and not knowing that we'll be getting seen.
The question will be whether the use of the green room applies to solar panels and
Sorry, what was that?
The the question will be whether the current use of agreement will apply to the soul. So look to the solar into solar agreement here. If it did, any cost savings generated would would be then, you know, there'd be an amount that'd be transferred for the cost of what we would pay for energy and any savings from that could that could be deposited in the board side Yusuf account.
I would be okay with that.
Which is how it's done right now generally for, you know, for geothermal and so on.
We got to know that until the PPA is finished or
Yeah, we will know that soon because it will be, you'll have a decision to make based on what response that we get once the PPA is provided. It will be, do you want to work the same way Yusuf works? Or, you know, if the board's acceptable, we'll accept that. And I think we're going to smooth save. If not, I don't know.
Yeah, and just and just to be clear, I think everyone got this, but sometimes we say PPA and sometimes we say license. This discussion only applies to the licensed front of the meter projects. The PPA benefits clearly accrue to the town, I mean, to the, sorry, clearly accrue to the Board of Ed. It's really only the two large front of the meter projects that we have this question about where will the license fee accrue to?
Yeah, you have to agree though to the PPA and to the license, right? Not the board have to read both, and so would the manager have to read more.
Correct, they'd have to, well, what we, the way we do the PPAs is they just, in most towns, we author, the the town council or town manager just authorizes the Board of Ed to enter into them. They're actually, but the documents are actually signed by usually the superintendent. And and there's, there's a reason for that. It has to do with, you know, incurrence of long term debt. And so that's why you want to get the best practices to get the town to authorize the entering into the entering into the agreements. But but the license is a slightly different type of document. And in that case, I mean, Green Skies is, I I asked them this question, they're going to get back to us. But they're likely going to want the town signature on the license because the town is the record title holder.
Any other further questions? So I think I feel like we've been talking about solo panels for quite some time. And I feel like we've been, we may perhaps move on to newer things if everyone is all set with their questions for now. Anyone online have any questions? I don't see any hands raised. I think we are looking okay. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining us tonight. Attorney Rennelli, I definitely think that Sophia sent you an awful lot of homework.
Excellent questions, yes, I appreciate it. And and I think all of them can be addressed.
So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Adam.
No problem.
We should see where this journey takes us.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, see you.
Bye.
All right. Okay, so I for tonight is some information about police dog search, just to bring your attention to a certain area, a certain policy. Policy 590 allows for the superintendent to utilize drug detection dogs in cooperation with the Connecticut State Police. Specifically, the area of that policy that does that is the under three, section three, use of drug detection dogs, metal detectors, similar detective devices and or breathalyzers and other passive optical screening devices may be used only with the authorization of the superintendent in accordance with such procedures as the superintendent may devise. So the reason I bring this to the board is we have had, you know, in this community and others, you know, awareness of children, young adults using new ways to acquire drugs that have not typically been part of the landscape, you know, for previous generations and in the past. And specifically, they're using what's called the dark web. And they're ordering things on the dark web. And these things are being delivered by the U.S. Postal Service to their house. So in the past, you know, you had to hook up with a dealer somewhere and, you know, there was some kind of, you know, there were a number of opportunities to, you know, to to stop that process. But what we're noticing now is methamphetamine and things like that can actually be ordered on the dark web and be delivered to a home. And so it's it's much, much easier for people that would fall into, you know, the the trap of doing such things or feeling pressured to do such things or whatever than it has ever been in the past to. You, you literally do not even have to leave your house. So, you know, we, you know, we want to take proactive measures here. So rather than react and wait until these types of things are in our schools, you know, in 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 any more prevalence than what has already happened in this community and others, we want to set up a situation where anyone who might think about doing this would think twice because they're never sure when the next search will occur. And so I want to do at least two a year. And we would do them, we would not, we would not do announce when we were doing them. And we would also not announce how many there would be. I mean, we wouldn't be doing them every other week, but we're not going to make an announcement about exactly how many. And we're certainly not going to make an exact, an announcement about exactly when. And the point is to have every, you know, anyone who might think of this decide that it is a very unsafe and unwise place to keep anything that they might have acquired off the dark web. You know, that way, we have a much greater chance of keeping these, these things out of our schools, you know, out of our lockers, out of our parking lots. Otherwise, you know, the counter incentive for doing this is greatly diminished. I mean, you know, there are many lockers, we we can't search them all, obviously. We can only, you know, we have ability to search under reasonable cause as in local parentis. We are able to kind of act as the parents if we have any reason to believe that someone has anything in their locker. But in all frankness, there's thousands of lockers. And so unless we, you know, have a tip, we may search a locker. The dogs can do this extremely quickly, extremely efficiently. And the fact that, you know, this would be done during a secure building, we would, we would deliberately initiate a secure building. The class instruction would continue, no instructional time would be lost. And during the 84 minute period that we have that, you know, we have that secure building occur, these dogs would sniff, you know, and go through and sniff all the lockers, sniff the cars, parking lots, that type of thing. So we're going to be able to execute that. And really, it it works as a deterrent to anyone feeling like they could safely bring such things into our schools. If this doesn't happen, I believe that because of the ease of access to these materials now and the fact that they will be delivered by the U.S. Postal Service apparently, as we have had experience with, that we we really won't, you know, be able to be as effective as we need to be, being proactive in keeping them out of our school.
Oh, I like the idea.
Good question. So you feel you're you're doing this on on a educated guess, lack of a better term, that this is becoming more prevalent, right?
Yeah, if you mix the fact that, you know, young adults during this period of their development, generally, their limbic system and their prefrontal cortex are at a variance, meaning they are much, much more apt to engage in at risk behaviors. You mix that with the capability of literally ordering this off the internet and having it delivered to your house. And those two things do not go well together, you know. And that means that I think we could expect to see an increasing prevalence if we're not taking additional proactive measures to make sure that, you know, that there's a a moment of pause on the part of anyone who would do it because they don't know. Is today going to be the day? Is tomorrow going to be the day? And if one of the searches occurs, it can't be that that's the only one we do for the year because then someone would think, well, good, they did it for the year. I'll just bring in my stuff for the rest of the year because I know they only do one a year. That's why we will not just do one a year. You know, it's not going to be disruptive to our process. But we want anyone who would consider doing such a thing to think, you know, to think better of it and not do that because of the risk that they would know be caught.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a good strategy to try to to crack down on this. I just want to make sure I I understand, you know, we're not doing this necessarily in reaction to like a wave of new incidents, but it's more just, we don't know what's out there and we want to, but we want to to cut down on it.
Right, we, you know, we don't have a wave of new incidents, but but we we have learned how easy it is to acquire these now. Which that frankly, that wasn't part of my experience in in years past.
It's scary.
I've been doing the job, you know, for for decades and we've never seen it. I've never encountered this where it is so easy to access. But if someone had asked me if, you know, if I thought that these things could be transported through the U.S. Postal Service, I would have said absolutely not. But I have since learned that in fact, they can. There are not, you know, incredibly effective scanning methodologies for the postal service and that they regularly do get delivered. And not only that, the 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 things that get delivered are from various areas of the world. And, you know, they're they may be kind of laced with other things. You know, it's extremely dangerous and extremely easily accessible. And so because that is the case, you know, it's not due to any increased prevalence. It's more due to the increased ease of access. And my concern that that's going to, that is going to result in in without any counter measure, you know, increased prevalence and a desire to, you know, bring those things in. Because I also think it lessens what some young adults think of as the seriousness of it when they can get it in the U.S. Postal. You know, I think that actually decreases their own view of how dangerous the seriousness is if they can order it like they're ordering something off Amazon and literally get it. You know, so I'm worried about it. I just want to make sure we're being proactive and keeping it out of our buildings and our in our parking.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I I I think it's fair. You know, the one thing I would say is, you know, there there were instances years ago, you know, and you want, you want to make sure consequences are fair across the board and not in favor of this particular student or that particular student. And, you know, and want to make sure that is also the focal point in this sort of process. Because again, there's been instances, you know, in college specifically where that hasn't been the case. So I do want to mention that. And I I will say, you know, using context clues, it's it's focused on the high school. But the not disrupting class, I think, is sort of, I mean, that's, that's really beneficial. Especially if the kids are in the classrooms, they're, they don't really know what's going on. They may see a police car arrive to the front of the school, but that may be one class, the front building, whatever. So I think this is well thought out, and I appreciate your diligence on the topic.
Thank you. I I don't think it will, it won't disrupt it by us, but the kids will know there are dogs.
Sure.
As they come through the hallways. And these dogs are not canine German shepherds. They are, they're they're more cute looking dogs.
The person's very plain. Yeah, they're like labs, but they're very cute because they had a sprinkling, the police officer had all the dogs, of course, I didn't want to say, out of the dogs.
I don't think they'll be intimidating, but they're cute. Dogs are actually really cute. But but it'll be obvious that they're surfing the lockers, which is what we want. We want it to be obvious, but not not disruptive.
It's not going to be like, what is it, Drago, Drago, big canine that takes everyone down.
No, we're not, we're not.
You know, it's like the the fluffy lab.
But that's, that's, thank you. Again, it's for me, the focus is on fair consequences across the board. And I think
Any other further questions on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's evaluation.
So as you may recall, we we did not have a meeting in early April. So this is So, uh, this is, uh, this is the meeting where I'm putting this on the agenda. Um, evaluation process begins, you know, this gives you a handle on the timeline. It's official reminder to the board that. Must be, uh, occurring no later than May thirty-first, or they're in copy to me, no later than thirtieth. And then I could provide a written reaction, which become part of the, uh, permanent attachment to my file. And no later than the thirty-first of each year, um. You know, we would have to meet to discuss it. And so we're usually way ahead of the meeting to discuss a piece. Um, but the timeline does now begin, um, and so this year, May to May twenty-fourth. You know, individual BOE member meetings, if any board member just, you know, desires it, please let me know, reach out to my office. Uh, so that we can meet, we'll have the chair and vice chair present. If you have any individual questions, any, any thoughts in your mind or individual questions with respect to my email. You know, meet with me, you know, or anything you want to resolve before you get into the summary part. Uh, May tenth, I will present to the Board of Ed. So in the next Board of Ed meeting, I'll do an official presentation as I have passed. And make it brief and just kind of, uh, throw it, throw out the details for the board. Um, and again, in the time span between May first and the twenty-fourth. You can meet with me individually before and or after that summary with the chair and vice chair president. Um, and we can go over any questions you have, even after the press, you know, I present. May twenty-fourth, there'll be a BOE meeting, as you know. And, uh, the chair and vice chair will, in that meeting, gather feedback to, uh, to discuss with me. Uh, May twenty-fifth through June seventh, uh, the chair and vice chair will discuss. Any additional feedback with me and get any clarifications or information, um, that they need. And they'll discuss the feedback with me from their May twenty-fourth meeting with the Board of Ed. Uh, so they basically will be giving you an opportunity to respond to anything that occurs there, any questions that come up there. Uh, June seventh to June twenty-seventh, uh, the chair and the vice chair will complete the evaluation. And June twenty-eighth, the chair and the vice chair will present the eval to the Board of Ed in a meeting, uh, at that time. And I, I will also obviously receive it at that time. Uh, and then the rest of the timeline, you know, goes, goes into effect with respect to what happens after that. So that happens no later than June thirtieth. Um, and so we would be doing it June twenty-eighth, where I get the official written, the written response.
Any questions? We will move on to many liaison reports, um. So much has happened, I'm like, not even sure what, um. We have, I know you had communications, correct? The policy was canceled, um.
That I'm see the grid design here.
Yeah, and then I know negotiations, we are still in negotiations. Doing stuff, so that's, that's the negotiations update, um. So do you want to do curriculum?
Yeah, this will take today. So we had, um, a good meeting, a short meeting earlier today. Um, we went over some of the new results, uh, for, for test scores. Um, that have been loaded up onto the, into the portal, um, which, which everyone can, can see on this town website. Um, good news is our, our district's performing well, um, relative to a lot of other towns in our Derg, especially with. Uh, math, science. Um, we, we have a, a little ways to go still with regards to recovering from COVID. Uh, so that's still definitely a priority, but, um, we're competitive with the other towns. And we have, we have seen, um, at least part of the recovery, which is, which is. Yes. And then the other thing was, is that we've been pursuing some efforts to incorporate some more opportunities for, for. Students to have time, um. Be good face-to-face interactions that aren't, that isn't just screen time. We've been trying to. Figure out ways we can emphasize that more in the community. Um, I think there's definitely a need for it, um. And, uh, we, we have, um. Dr. Will has been working with human services and, um, soon the rec department to try to come up with some. Join activities for our students that, um. We'd like to get on the Board of Ed's agenda. Within, within the next couple of months probably, but we still need to just, um. Can you take a few more steps to get some more, more people on board with this before, before ready for that, but. Um, so far, so good, those efforts.
Well, thank you, um. What about mental health?
He was canceled, man, the most recent meeting was canceled, so I don't think we need until May.
Yeah, I think there's one, May, May first hasn't been canceled yet, has it?
It depends on two different factors.
Yeah. So nothing to report from that.
Okay, so I'm not missing anything, right? Everyone.
The only, like, what I can say i- i- is I believe we're going down to sort of a one meeting per month, um, basis.
Seems that way.
Right, and so, uh, there's going to be fewer updates, uh, from the task force, but, um, that's really it.
Good, thank you. Okay. For, uh, Chairperson report, I did, um, want to make sure that everyone knows that the referendum is coming up. Um, please vote and support the budget because we did have to do a lot of reductions in order to meet three percent. Um, so please go out and vote, and that is May second, correct?
Yes.
May second, and it's going to be held in the, um. Library room is what I believe, but I think I saw on the flyer that that sent. Um, yes, so please go out and vote because we definitely need the support. So let's go ahead and go to board action.
All right, um. First court action item is that essentially the short version of this. Is that the state of Connecticut has now allowed. The school districts to continue the flexibilities evaluation plan. Where the CT guidelines for educator evaluation. Into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And while we're doing that. Um, the state of Connecticut is supposed to put out its new Connecticut teacher guidelines, you know, guidelines for teacher eval, admin eval. And we will be writing the new plans, uh, in the twenty-three, twenty-four year for implementation in. The twenty-four, twenty-five year. But in order to be able to do that, we literally can't be writing them while we're in them. So the state of Connecticut basically said continue flexibilities, you know, for the next year. Um, proactively, what I'm doing is going to you as the board and say. Because they've done this, it's pretty much, it's exactly the same thing as we did last year. Um, we're bringing it to the board to say, you know. If you want, you can make a motion to approve the continued adoption of flexibilities educator evaluation plan and force the twenty-two, twenty-three year. For the twenty-three, twenty-four year and can check that box since frankly. There really isn't another choice here. The only alternative is falling back to the August twenty-nineteen evaluation plan. Which is a completely, very different animal and it will not be, uh. Will not be, uh, really very similar to what the state's providing. For its next iteration of, of, you know, of the documentation. Um, the last time that this was done was, uh, twenty-seventeen from the state of Connecticut. It's called the CCT, uh, twenty-seventeen document. It was also called a C document. We expect them to create a new version of that, but it would be twenty-twenty-three. It would be something like. Connecticut Common Core of Teaching for twenty-twenty-three, and that's what we are supposed to, you know, build the development. But they have not yet done that. So what I did is I provided a lot of, um. You know, documentation here for the board. So it's the same general.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think as board members, we have seen this a few times now, so we're just. Continuing on with what is already implemented and we will continue to implement it until the rules change for Connecticut. So to make that wrap it up, um, I will entertain this motion that is on.
Okay, uh, Jacob, Mari, I move to approve the continued adoption of the Flexibilities Educator Evaluation Plan. Enforced in twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-fourth school year. Do you even register it also?
At this time, is there any further discussion or any questions from anyone up in the room or online?
I'll just add, I think, Dr. Will, we should probably just touch base on this at some point in curricular committee.
Yeah.
Um, that's, uh, probably when they change officially.
Good thing to talk about. I'll put it, put the new CCT in front of the curriculum committee.
What do you typically?
Well. Frankly, I, I wish they already had. And I, and if someone had asked me about that, I would have thought they had, or they've already done it. Um, so there's no typical here, like the one before it was twenty-fourteen and then the next one was twenty-seventeen. This one, the EES has been working on, yeah, even the governor made an announcement, but there's nothing. Other than the general flexibilities documents, which I did include in LinkedIn. There's nothing else that we can grab onto at the moment. So we're hoping that'll be any day now. By the summer, because I'd love to get started in the summer.
Perfect. So at this time, um, we'll do a roll call vote since we have some of those online and in the room. So Jaden.
Aye.
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
And Lauren?
Aye.
I'm a I as well, therefore this passes as is. Okay, number, oh, two.
So you may recall, uh, every year around this time, we consider what summer meetings the board may like to cancel. Um, July twelfth is usually one that is considered. Other possibilities are the July twenty-sixth, August ninth, August twenty-third. But July twelve, this first one is one of the more popular ones because many people. Uh, do go away in that early July period, true, the July period.
Yeah.
There's no, just to double check, there's nothing we should expect big on the agenda July. And I know you don't have, you can go to your crystal ball, but you know.
I would say there's a reason that the board typically does cancel a summer meeting.
Okay.
Um, hard to predict. I certainly hope not. I'd like all of us, we, we need a good breath, breath share here generally. Uh, generally this, there, there are things happening that are urgent at that time, but we know.
So better, it's never projecting a normal year.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you?
The fact that I'd say it would almost make my words law.
I mean, here's the deal, we can always cancel it, but then if, for, you know. Something happens, then we can just create a special meeting because.
Yeah.
I'm not, obviously supposed to doing that. So.
Yeah, just gotta ask.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no problem. Okay, so I will, um, entertain this motion that he has motion up here. Yep.
Uh, Jacob, Mari, move to cancel the Board of Education meeting held on July twelfth, or scheduled for July twelfth.
Jay, you registered, I will say.
Okay, um, any further discussion on this? No? Okay, um, so we'll just start off with a roll call, go over it first. Uh, Dana?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
I'll go. Keeping everyone on their toes. And I as well, therefore we will officially cancel the day July twelfth. Okay, um, at this time, um, we can open up the public participation. There are no members in the room. So once again, if you could, please list your name and your address for the record. You will be given two minutes on, um. Zoom call and it just has to pertain to what was on the agenda tonight and that, that is it. If you could, please raise your hand. Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close out public participation. Um, if any board members have any points of information, please do so now. Are you guys good online? Okay, so I will close that out as well. And so I will entertain a motion for a German.
Motion with your second.
Okay, so we will, oh, I gotta do a vote. Jaden's.
Aye.
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Lauren?
Aye.
I'm a I as well, therefore we will return at eight fifty-eight. Thank you, everyone.